We're starting at six oh three. Okay, hold on, just hold on one more minute. Hello? Can I share a moment, is that you?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Okay, we're good to go. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Ready to go? Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the October thirteenth meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Mr. Escabel?
Here.
Mr. Laborn?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Present.
Dr. Rennie? Mr. Seagrave?
Present.
Mr. White?
Present.
Dr. Aldrich?
Present.
Mayor Collins?
Present.
Dr. Emmons?
Present.
Mr. Royball?
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please join me in honoring Councilman Scott Royball by observing a moment of silence? Thank you. You know, I spent a good part of yesterday calling Scott's colleagues and friends preparing for tonight's meeting. And I have to tell you guys, I spent a couple hours laughing as he shared stories about Scott and his adventures and his misadventures that he'd had with him. It felt good to dwell on the positive impact he had on all of us who knew him. The words that people shared with me about Scott were calm, steady, he was even tempered, compassionate, trustworthy, and respectful. But everyone talked about Scott's sense of humor and how he would use that sense of humor to lighten off in very tense situations. He used it to reset the discussion, to block the noise, and to get to the heart of the matter. His sense of humor made it so fun to work with him. Someone who knew him for fifty years told me they'd never once seen him mad. Of all these stories make me think of Scott's resourcefulness. Story is, it seems that one day he was riding in the Cheyenne Frontier Days Parade and he was thirsty. He called ahead to the Crown and asked them if they could bring him a soda to his carriage during the middle of a parade. Well, that drink got him a scolding from the Cheyenne Frontier Days Chairman and the Chief of Police, but that was so Scott. Resourceful. While Scott supported many things, opening the Bellbar Ranch was a passion of his. The city bought the Bellbar Ranch in two thousand and three for its water resources and its landfill opportunities. And Scott thought that a ranch owned by the people ought to be open to the people. We've been working for the past few years to design and build a trail system to give our residents additional outdoor recreational opportunities and open that ranch to our residents. The construction of the trails are almost done. And I'm so disappointed that Scott won't be there to help us cut the ribbon when we open this amazing facility. I'm sure his presence will be felt as his persistence was a huge part of getting the trails built. Stephanie Boster shared with me that she ran against Scott for Ward One City Council. The League of Women Voters was having a city council debate, and Scott introduced himself to Stephanie. He gave her a tour of all of our council offices, and he offered to be a resource to help her. And that was a woman running to take his seat. I think that speaks to his character. A city staff member shared with me how Scott had the ability to let everyone feel like they were seen and appreciated in the room. He would take a minute to say hi, share a bit of gossip, and make you feel like you're a part of his life and a part of the business at hand. Scott did not take himself too seriously. He was the same guy before and after he was elected. One of Scott's former council members, Dicky Shaner, shared, Scott was known for being affable, but don't mistake his friendliness for him being a pushover. He was an independent thinker and committed to his positions and beliefs about the future of our city. He was motivated to serve and would always come to the table to discuss tough issues and make his case. He will be missed on the council. When he was asked how he kept going, Scott said he didn't want to let the old man in. And he lived his life young. Scott's mom, Mary, is here tonight along with his brother John and some of their friends. And Mary, your son, was a loved and valued member of our team here at the city and a friend to all of us who knew him. Thanks for being here today. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Item number four, consent agenda. All items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right, are there any items a member of this governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Doctor?
Thirteen, please.
Is there a concurrence?
Concur.
All right, number thirteen is taken off. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Laborn?
Eighteen B.
Concur.
Concur.
All right, eighteen B has also been removed. If there's no others, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Removed by Mr. Seagrave and seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent agenda is approved with items thirteen and eighteen B removed. They'll be considered in their normal sequence on the agenda.
Item six A, public hearing to receive comments and input for the Bell Building Urban Renewal Plan and Project as required by Wyoming Statute fifteen dash nine dash one zero nine.
All right, we'll open this public hearing. Is there anybody here in the audience who would like to speak to the public hearing on the Bell Building Urban Renewal Plan and Project? How about from the governing body?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This particular building was really a mess. It was contaminated. It was long in the process. It was a lot of work for the various people involved to get that Brownfield GPA grant lined up and begin that process. Following that, we've seen the windows go in and we know that this building is actually well on its way to being salvaged. And it was one of the worst buildings downtown, and I don't know how many of you are in it before this all began. But it was, it was just really a classic case of asbestos, lead paint, neglect that really needed a lot of attention. So I'm certainly glad that it has received that. And some people might not understand how critical that building between two other downtown buildings was and how if there hadn't have been this effort, it was definitely headed for demolition. So now when we can look at it, we can confidently say, and I'm we obviously haven't reached the point of approval yet of the further effort, but this really is part of something people need to understand about downtown buildings. It's easy to love them. It's hard to fix them up. And this was a case of a lot of different people, different programs that EPA Brownfield is critical. So I'm certainly believing that we will see some good results in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak from the governing body? Hard hearing none, the purpose of the public hearing has been met. Thank you.
Item number seven, ordinance third reading. Annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, various tracts of land completely surrounded by current city limits, Situette and Eastern Cheyenne, generally located south of Delrange Boulevard, west of Dry Creek, east of North College Drive, and north of Cheyenne Street.
All right, this is part of a city council goal that we started back in two thousand and twenty-one, if I remember correctly. This is the seventh iteration of a county pocket annexation, and this one includes thirty-five properties. Is there anybody in the audience here today to speak to this city-initiated annexation of those thirty-five properties? Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. White. Comments on the annexations by governing body? Dr. Aldrich?
Mayor Collins, through you, I'm just wondering if there have been any new public comments that have been made by anyone since this was introduced and that the public meeting was held and since our last meeting.
Mr. White?
Mayor and members of Council, Connor Way Planning and Development Department. Through you, Mayor, no, there has not been any additional comments since Public Service Committee last week.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body? Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. And just for the public record, has there been any property owners opposing the annexation?
Get your steps into it, Mr. White.
Mayor, through you, again, Connor Way Planning and Development Department. At the public meeting, I wouldn't say everybody was thrilled about it, but we haven't had any comments where people have opposed it or called us opposing it. I recently had a phone call where, actually, I guess this is a comment, but it was more they were just wondering when they need to switch over their trash collection, so I just directed them to sanitation to find that out. But they didn't call opposing it or anything. They were just basically wondering when that was all going to take place. Otherwise, I haven't had any direct comments that have said, I don't want to be annexed. We don't want this. Besides, maybe, I guess the people at the public meeting we had to start for the Q and A session, yes, people were not thrilled about it. But nobody's come to any of these meetings. Nobody's called us since that time. There's been no additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other comments from members of the governing bodies? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Dr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Escabel?
Aye.
Mr. Laborn?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yeah.
Mr. Seagrave?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. The annexations are approved on third and final reading with Mr. Moody voting no.
Number eight, ordinance third reading. Amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classifications of AR agricultural residential, MR medium density residential, MUR mixed-use residential, and MUB mixed-use business for land annexed to the city of Cheyenne, generally located south of Delrange Boulevard, west of Dry Creek, east of North College Drive, and north of Cheyenne Street.
All right, I say this all the time, but when we annex land, state law says we've got to give it a city zone. And so we try to establish a zone that's the closest to the underlying county zoning, which is what we're doing here today. And I'll go out to the audience if anybody wants to speak to the zone changes, the assignment of zoning before us. Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Emmons. Comments for members of governing body? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Escabel?
Aye.
Mr. Laborn?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Seagrave?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich?
Yes.
Assigned zones are approved on third and final reading.
Item number nine, ordinance second reading. Amending section two point two point eight, assigned zoning of the Cheyenne Unified Development Code to conform with the comprehensive revisions of the Laramie County zoning regulations.
All right, just talked about when we annex pieces of property, we have to give it a city zone. And in the past, we've had a one-to-one where it made it really easy for us to assign our zones, but recently the county has changed their zoning rules. And our zones don't match exactly, and so we're coming up with a process to be able to assign the zones for newly annexed pieces of property. We'll go out to the audience and see if anybody in the audience wants to speak to this new process.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Seth Lloyd. I'm with the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development Department. I had a presentation ready to go for this council meeting, but obviously, technology has defeated me. So you guys have a paper copy of that presentation. Unfortunately, the public does not have access to that public presentation if they're in the room. The ones on Zoom might have some access to that presentation. My Zoom failed on my computer as well, so just going with the
Mr. Lloyd, would it be better just to take, this is on second reading, maybe bring that to the committee meeting, and then if there's questions on the next meeting, we could do that?
Mr. Chair, if that's council's preference, I could make that presentation at the committee meeting instead.
That way, everybody can be part of it. Is that okay with the committee? Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Anybody else in the audience? All right, hearing none, Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. White. Comments on the ordinance from members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number ten, ordinance second reading. Amending section eight point six zero point zero five zero reads as a nuisance of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, to revise and clarify provisions and specify conditions under which vegetation does not constitute a nuisance.
All right, this is a UDC amendment. Currently, most vegetation that's more than six inches tall is considered a nuisance, and maybe that doesn't make a lot of sense in some cases. And so we have an ordinance that would maybe give us some flexibility in that six inches and above. Is there anybody here in the audience who want to speak to this?
A point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
You said this is an amendment to the UDC. I believe actually it's an amendment to the city code.
You're right, it is. Thank you. Anybody here to speak to that? Hearing none. Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Emmons? Do we have comments for members of the governing body? Comments? Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Just a question. Fire mitigation and prevention, we know that we allow leaves to be too tall, especially some industrial areas that could be problematic. Is there anything in here that could be problematic with regards to that?
Chief, do you want to take that? Is there anything that you're concerned about with this ordinance? And you thought you were getting off easy tonight? Andrew Dykes, Horn Fire Chief for Cheyenne Fire Rescue, through you, Mr. Mayor. No, there's nothing in that ordinance at this time. Thank you, Chief. Anybody else in the governing body? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This ordinance is also approved on second reading.
Item number eleven, ordinance second reading. Amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from P public and MUV mixed-use business, emphasis to CVD Central Business District for land located between O'Neill Avenue and Carey Avenue, north of West Nineteenth Street and south of West Twenty-Second Street.
All right, this is a zone change for the municipal building complex and a few blocks next to that that will help bring those uses into conformity and maybe help with the further development of some of those areas. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this zone change? Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's seconded by Mr. White. Anybody in the governing body would like to speak to the zone change? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This ordinance is also approved on second reading.
Number twelve, ordinance first reading. Amending sections one point four point three, one point four point four, five point one point four, five point seven point ten, and five point eight point two of the unified development code to define recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds, designate zone districts for their operations, create specific use standards for recreational vehicle parks, campgrounds, and revise manufactured home and parks regulations as necessary.
We'll send this item to the Public Services Committee.
Number thirteen, resolution directing the planning department to review the Unified Development Code and provide a recommendation to the governing body regarding the allowance of a greater variety of trees and smaller tree sizes in new residential developments.
All right, is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak to this resolution? Please come forward and
Good evening, I'm Jeremy Hamilton. I do have some handouts for the council members.
Jeremy, do you have one that you could give to our clerk also?
I think so.
There's extra copy, okay.
Yep. Wanted to discuss the tree requirement currently by the UDC code. The tree, the thirteen different trees that are on the list, once we started having the inspections done by the City Forestry Service, we have found out these trees are quite large on our smaller lots. The lot sizes, talking about specifically over in Salveridge, a few of the members have met me out there as council. So I appreciate you taking time, but at the end of the day, I think property rights, you know, just people should be able to landscape how they shall be. The tree location has kind of got me confused there. I was told we have to move a tree, which we will do tomorrow on this specific lot that I've been emailing you guys about over there in Salveridge. Soil conditions for these trees, all these all the subdivisions, the newer subdivisions are all scraped. There is clay soil over there. Not great for any trees, but I, I think we should have some kind of trees in the subdivision, and I think that should be up to the subdivisions, the ACC committees and stuff like that. We talked about during the Public Service Committee insurance concerns with these trees. And then again, just the size of lots and in my handout, you'll find just different pictures of the, the trees that, you know, we're being asked to plant our trees thirty-nine inches from the sidewalks. Some of the pictures that you'll see has caused damage over on Ms. Betty's house. You received an email on Ms. Betty a few months ago about her water, but those trees had caused damage to to the sidewalk, no different than my house, too, up in the point. We have a tree that's fourteen years old that has caused at least fifteen hundred dollars worth of damage, so I guess my question would be, who, who's paying for the damage down the road if we're asked to plant trees in locations that we feel as homeowners that they shouldn't be? Again, thanks for taking this situation up and look forward to it. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Okay, bear with me here.
Yes.
I'd just like to remind that this is just directing the planning commission to study it. That's the topic.
Understood.
Thank you.
I'm going to call point of order. I'd be happy to rule on it.
Mr. Bowling, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
Okay, give me just a minute. Hold on.
Okay.
I don't know if this is going to work.
Do our best, Jennifer. It's all we can do.
I have it up all the way. Can you go ahead, Mr. Bowling?
Good afternoon, everyone. I appreciate your time. Can you guys hear me okay?
I think I can. I can better. I just give this to you. Listen, I, I don't. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Philip Bowling, and I'm today speaking on behalf of the Board of Realtors as their president. And I just want to let you guys know that I'm in agreeance with Jeremy and agreeance with working with the board to or working with the committee to find a better way that works. I want you guys, I don't want to emphasize that we continue to see codes increase and ways to make homes less attainable, and we don't believe this ordinance is a solution to attainable housing. Therefore, the Cheyenne Board of Realtors is in agreeance to find a different way due to the costs and the complications it creates. But we are also committed to discussing solutions and working with the city to find a balanced resolution that supports both attainable housing and also homeowners' rights as well, too. So I just want to let you guys, as a board, we are in favor of finding a different route for this information or this ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer? So the gentleman spoke basically from the Board of Realtors and is mostly concerned about the amount of regulations and wishing that I think he's speaking in support of doing this review. I did not catch his name, though.
His name is Mr. Bowling. I had his full name up here, but I don't have it now.
That's fine, thank you.
Philip Bowling.
Ma'am, did you want to speak to us? Good evening.
Nancy Loomis. Don't have to give the address. I live, I'm in District Three, I guess. So I have a strong sense that the resolution before the council is going to pass, so I hope that Councilwoman Aldrich is correct when she says the current resolution is an opportunity to have a broader discussion. Much like our urban forester, Mark Allison, I have a specialized landscaping focus. Mark's focus is on trees and the urban tree canopy. Mine is on managing stormwater runoff on site through the planting of bioswales, like the one that flows through Civic Commons Natural Area and the Infiltration Basin, like the detention pond at the Laramie County Library. On smaller residential properties, the same type of features are commonly called garden rails and rain gardens, respectively. I tell you this because I would like to share another informational element for the broader discussion. Up to this point, the positive attributes of the urban tree canopy have focused on the summer season. However, those features that we love in the summer, such as shade and cooler temperatures, continue into the winter months and can cause stormwater drainage issues and hazardous icy conditions.
Mr. Mayor, I would call a point of order. The resolution is just simply directing the planning department to do the review. I think all of this comes up during that review process.
Can you help us, Nancy, and just maybe try to stay focused on the purpose of this? Should we do a review of our, our code on the recommendation for planting trees?
Okay, so my, my thoughts are Okay, so my, my thoughts are that yes, if it leads to a broader discussion. If it does not, then I think that it should not be addressed at this time until um other concerns can be directed within the resolution that other citizens have brought up. And, and so I think it depends on if it's going to lead to a broader discussion. I mean, that's been brought up by council members. Um, I have concerns that if it's solely concentrated on the resolution as it stands, then my recommendation is no, it does not move forward.
Thank you Nancy. Anybody else?
I do have one more person online, um, I'm gonna try it this way, do you have your computer up? That's what I was gonna try, I saw you doing that. Okay. So Krista, I'm I'm gonna unmute you.
Okay, we'll give it a shot. Okay, can you hear me?
Muted. Krista, you can go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? I think when I do that, it sounds like most everything. Okay, I, it's very glitchy on my side and, and sounds like on yours. I just want to make a, a comment regarding the proposal and looking into it. Um, I have reached out to a couple of different uh members and had a couple of different conversations since May, and I am requesting once again that in reviewing this code, that we bring in landscape and tree companies that do the work here in Cheyenne, um, so that they, they can be part of the, the conversations instead of just um, the, the after portion of when things have already been decided.
Thank you, Krista. Anybody else in the audience? Please sir. Your timing was perfect.
I know, right? Um, good evening, everyone, I appreciate your time. I was actually, the gentleman was on the phone, since it wasn't working, I was driving by, I was like, I'm just gonna pull over and stop in real quick, so.
Love it.
Um, just to give you guys a heads up, I'm Philip Bowling, yes. Uh, my name is Philip Bowling, and I'm the President of the Cheyenne Board of Realtors. And so we are in favor of looking at this in a different way and sitting down to have the conversation, so. Um, I don't want to repeat Jeremy's points, because I know that's a lot of information, and we're not speaking on that part. We're speaking on the fact that we want to move forward with looking at different ways, but I do want to emphasize that we continue to see codes increase in ways that make homes less attainable, and we don't believe this ordinance is a solution to attainable housing. Therefore, the Cheyenne Board of Realtors is in favor of looking at other options and routes to go um, due to the cost and complications it creates, but we are committed in discussing solutions and working with the city to find a balanced resolution that supports both attainable housing, um, the community goals, and also property right for homeowners. So if you guys do want to visit with us, we're open for that as well too, so.
Appreciate you stopping by and doing that.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Seagrave, we have a motion, please.
There's somebody.
Have more?
One more, so someone's gotta speak for, for the shade trees, so I'm gonna try to do that.
We're on, we're on the resolution mark for, uh, you know, whether or not to have the, uh, big discussion, right?
Right.
Identify yourself.
Yep, uh, Mayor Collins, uh, members of city council. Um, as far as this resolution goes.
Mark, can you identify yourself?
Ah, sorry, my name's Mark Allison, I'm the city forester here, and also the president of Rooted in Cheyenne. Um, as far as the resolution goes, I think it's a good idea to look at a greater variety of trees. Um, through the past um nine years with Rooted in Cheyenne, we've been planting several different variety, varieties of trees, so we're always looking for better species, right, species that can withstand our harsh climate here, because Cheyenne's like no place on earth. I've lived in a lot of places, and this is the hardest place to grow trees. So I, I really like the idea of looking into um greater variety of trees, I think we're already doing that, but I think bringing together a diverse group might help. As far as the new, uh, the, the tree sizes, um, I don't believe that we should be allowing small trees for street trees, and so that's where I would say to vote no on this resolution. Um, so in, in the case of Saddle Ridge, in the case of these smaller lots where this discussion started, um, we typically are requiring one shade tree, one shade tree for a street tree. And street trees are a our infrastructure, right, it's very similar to a sidewalk, right? Within our code, when a builder builds a new house, he's required to build a sidewalk. So along with that is the street tree, one street tree planted by a professional is gonna cost less than a thousand dollars. Um, by planting an ornamental in this situation, you're really reducing those benefits to the neighborhood. I think you all probably saw my presentation about shade trees and how important they are and the benefits that they provide over ornamentals, right? Bigger is better in terms of trees as, as, as street trees go.
Mister Mayor, I'll just relate to the resolution. Can you get back to the resolution?
Okay, so yeah, all these reasons are, are really why that, uh, I think you should, should vote no on this, on this resolution.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience, last call. All right, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White, comments from members of the governing body on the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Doctor.
Uh, Mayor Collins, through you, I, you know, I am one of the sponsors on this resolution, and um, I believe that anytime we can have a conversation um, to discuss our codes and our U D C and involve all the people that this impacts, um, I don't see any damage from that conversation. Um, I think it leads to better understanding, um, a better educated um constituents, as well as a better educated, uh, city services. And um I would urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this resolution. Um, by, uh, no vote, you're voting no to have a conversation, and I think that that's not where any of us want to end up, thank you.
Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to make sure that the, uh, audience and the folks at home understand that this resolution is asking the, the planning department to review the variety of trees and the size of trees. It's not opening up all the landscaping regulations, um, all the other things that, that possibly could go into a uh, a yard or a commercial property, simply the variety of trees and the size of trees, that's all we're going to study if we pass this resolution, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor.
This is a particularly difficult issue, and I'm seeing a particularly difficult discussion occurring here that is precluding a lot of the testimony that I heard in the Public Service Committee in regard to the broader issue of trees and site plans and where they should go and what we can do to maintain them. So I'm certainly not opposed to conversation, but I am opposed to this kind of a conversation. I suppose we'll have to bring some sort of further action, but I think we all know and has been pointed out here, this is a difficult place to raise trees. Nevertheless, uh, the commitment to the community over the years has been, uh, substantial, meaningful, and long term. So when we look at those and attempt to balance those issues, I think we all have driven by or under the fan uh, places where, uh, there are big problems, I guess we'll have to uh, bring some further resolution here, but I want to make it clear that I've been to this particular site uh, that was of concern, um, I think that there is a good reason to uh, visit about it and discuss, and it really gets into a lot of different issues, but if we don't, when and how we get to the larger question, I think is really critical. We all know that those site plans are planted, they're not maintained, and then that happens, and I think the correspondence that we have here, a very detailed correspondence, tells us that this is a larger issue, so I hope everyone understands that, uh, certainly, and I, and I do want to make the point that, uh, I don't think we can shrink these lots any further, I think there's, this is about it. And so when we look at that and the costs associated and all the things that have been brought up, I think that, uh, certainly it's important to have that conversation, but, uh, members of the council, it is really important we have that broader conversation. And that's why I'm gonna be a vote, a no vote on this. It is really important that we look at, uh, that big picture, certainly, um, it's one that, uh, the suggestion that I heard in committee, Mr. Mayor, was, um, surprising to me. The idea seemed to be that we were prairie and we could go back to prairie, and I think that that's, uh, an interesting idea, but not one that we should pursue, and certainly, as we see more rocks and less trees, more heat, uh, more issues, um, I look forward to doing what we can to have that broader discussion. And, uh, that's the reason I'm gonna be voting no tonight, is not that I think this conversation shouldn't happen, and that these, uh, certainly there are improvements that can be made, but I think that, uh, I'm seeing a, a real concern, a, a broader concern, and I look forward to, uh, attempting to deal with that in the future, thank you.
Anyone else in the governing body? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Resolution is adopted with Mr. Labor voting no.
Number fourteen, resolution declaring a vacancy in the office of a city council member for Ward One and establishing procedures for filling said vacancy.
All right, with Mr. Royboll, or Mr. Royboll's recent passing, the state law requires that we have to declare a vacancy before we can refill his place, and so that's what this resolution does here today. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to that declaration of vacancy, please come forward. Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, this item was reviewed under other items for the agenda at the October sixth, twenty twenty five Public Services Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions of Title Two of the city code have been met. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Emmons, comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? I just, if I could for just a second, um, state law also says that once we, we pass this and, uh, our clerk gets it through the process, that we have, I believe, thirty days to, uh, make a selection, so I believe we'll have a press release will go out maybe tomorrow that talks about the process, and, uh, I think we'll have until, is it the twentieth, uh, for those applications to come in? And those will go to our city, um, council office and Jennifer. Um, so if anybody's interested, you can sure let them, let her know, she'll let you know the process that we need to go through, and then Mr. White and Mr. um, Labor will hold some interviews, and then the governing body will, will, uh, uh, ratify the selection that comes out of that, so, um, we have until the twentieth to be getting your applications in. Thank you. Next item, please.
Seventeen A, professional services agreement between the city of Cheyenne and Plan One Architects for the municipal building renovations design project.
All right, last six penny, we put some money on the, in the, the six penny to, uh, um, do a design for our municipal building that was built in the late nineteen seventies, which is in need of an upgrade, and so I believe this is the, uh, the contract that would allow us to begin that process. So anybody in the audience would like to speak to that? Hearing none, Mr. Labor.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve an amount not to exceed one million four hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave, comments from members of the governing body.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moody.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, I just had, uh, two additional questions more I thought of after the finance committee. Um, are we utilizing the plans that we're presenting during the work session in December twenty twenty-four, so essentially what they presented, is that gonna be the architectural plan with this contract?
I'm happy you're here to answer that question.
Mr. Mayor, um, Adele Bartel with Public Works, um, that was our spatial analysis, basically estimating what we would need in a design, and this will be the actual design.
Okay. Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you, uh, first and foremost, I wanted to make sure that this one million, four hundred and seventy-four uh, plus dollars, that is only for the design, that is not for the renovation, because I, the Tribune Eagle reported that was the cost of this renovation.
Mr. Mayor, through you, um, yes, that's just for design.
So it's strictly design, and the design, uh, my understanding is the design, um, would be very aligned with the spatial analysis that was done, as far as public and private places.
Yes, it will be used as a reference to what each department needs, um, in the design.
And lastly, the spatial design, uh, Mayor Collins, through you, that was done, done the spatial study um, only looked at City Hall, it didn't take into account, I don't believe, all of our other facilities and where we might be able to, um, better utilize um, space in all of our, um, current locations for offices, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor.
Well, I certainly speak in favor of this, uh, matter, and I can't imagine it could be more, anything could be more timely than us meeting over here instead of at the city building itself. So it really is, uh, um, surprising, uh, the long history of the troubles that we've had there. But, uh, I, I believe that the spatial analysis was correct. I believe that this design will give us that opportunity, and so I think that, uh, people should be, the community should be aware that, um, this just has to be done, thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body, Mr. Moody?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, um, I'm gonna be a no vote on this, I mean, I realize it was approved by a six penny, but just, I rewatched the, uh, work session from December, and it just really concerns me, we're saying private spaces, we're not talking private offices, which aren't considered private spaces, but a whole floor, that would apply more to a corporation, not a city hall, and it just concerns me that constituents might think, you know, what is the city trying to hide, so if it didn't have that design, it'd be an eye, but, but with that design in mind, that's from that work session, that's why I'll be a no vote, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Emmons.
Mr. Mayor, if this money was set aside from the six penny and we don't use it in the way in which it was intended per the vote, what kind of impact or implications does that have?
I think that's a really good question, Dr. Emmons, I think worst case scenario would be that we'd have to turn it back to the county to be redistributed throughout the, the county. But, um, my hope would be we find a different way, I mean, to use those dollars on that building.
And follow up, um, I just want to be also clear that there are a lot of office buildings at the city, county, state, local, uh, local level that have private offices, and I, I want to make sure that people realize that just because you have a private office doesn't mean you're doing anything, and Tor, it, it could be for confidentiality issues, which are really critical to make sure that we're respecting people's legal rights as well as employment law, uh, employment rights and the, um, kinds of issues that are being handled on a daily basis.
And Dr. Emmons, if I could follow up on that, I think, you know, a lot of the thoughts that went into the new design is, you know, when the building was built, we didn't have a lot of the security risks and things that, that we have today. And so the thought was that we would put as many public facing. And so the thought was that we would put as many public facing um departments on the main floor. Where people would come in the main floor and uh, and do business with the departments they needed to. The floors up above would not be ones that you could just go into without uh being escorted or um, or being invited up into them. So like if Mr. Moody had a, a, an office on the third floor and wanted to meet with a constituent or a resident. You know, that's, doesn't mean we couldn't do that, but we're just not going to give people wide, open access to our building. Where we see every day in the news where terrible things happen and we're just trying to make sure that when we redo this building, we do it also with security in mind. Anybody else? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the professional services agreement, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed?
No.
The professional services agreement is approved with Mr. Moody voting no.
Item eighteen B, consideration of bid number S dash two dash twenty-six. For an agreement between the city of Cheyenne and Richardson Construction, Inc. For the Depot Resort renovation project.
All right, this is the second phase of our depot renovations. We just completed the first phase and uh. Let's go out to the audience and see if anybody wants to speak to this uh bid before us. Hearing none, Mr. Layborn.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to accept the bid in an amount not to exceed. One million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moody. Comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Layborn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, can we have an explanation of uh? This is going to be a pretty big and uh important project, so I believe. Inside and out of the depot, so maybe we could get a review of what this amount of money is going to buy. And of course, I do want to know that this is coming from our six penny uh collection, so. A lot of six penny discussion tonight.
Mr. Sanchez, welcome. Mr. Mayor, Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation Events. Uh, so this project, the second phase consists of a few uh areas. We're going to uh remove all the carpet from the second and third floor. We'll be repainting both floors. We'll be opening up some office space where the Chamber of Commerce currently resides. Uh, right now they have some half walls and they're pretty congested, so we'll be opening that up. There's a comfort or a break room uh area on the second floor that we will. Uh, use a part of that room to create a second office space and then we'll remodel the, the break room area. We'll be repainting all of the window trim on the exterior, the dark green that we did in phase one on the back doors. We'll be removing some of the uh concrete through the plaza. Right now we have some trip hazards, so that would be remedied through this and we'll be replacing that with brick. The brick would match the, the pattern we have on a portion of the plaza. We would also have a design of like some railroad tracks that lead from the depot to Capitol Avenue. And it would also include a uh shade structure on the east side of the splash pad. Uh, currently we have white tents that we set up uh to, throughout the summer. Uh, right now, the, the tent on the, the splash pad or to the east of it, it, it drops down a foot in elevation facing the stage. Because of the steps that we have, the new shade structure would be, actually would elevate on that side, given a clear uh view of the stage in our Friday performances. Um, that's primarily what this would cover.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Layborn.
Uh, thank you. I just uh thought folks ought to understand this is going to be a big expenditure. And um, a, a big important move on what I consider to be our pride and joy. Which is the depot and the plaza, so uh we'll sure be noticing it and uh. I want to thank Community Recreation Events for the first phase that has been so successful. And I look forward to the second phase. Thank you.
Dr. Aldrich.
Uh, Mayor Collins through you. I was curious uh if perhaps um Jason, you can. Tell us, uh have we talked to the tenants and what will be the accommodations we'll be making with the tenants? While we do this renovation, because it's hard to renovate while you're living in the space.
Mr. Sanchez.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldrich. So prior to starting this phase and the design, we did meet with all of the tenants. We explained uh what the thought process was, what they would want to see in a, a renovation. Um, at that time, the majority of the tenants uh spoke of when the pandemic was taking place and they were able to work remotely. Uh, some of them have expressed that they would have that option again. Uh, what we're, if this is approved tonight with your approval, we're going to meet with our contractor next week. And kind of uh build our schedule of how this would work, but our plan would be to move uh the folks that are in there, in the building. Uh, the tenants to some of their office furniture to the hallway while we renovate certain areas. There will be some disruption, obviously. Uh, but I think we have a plan. Uh, we've been working Christie, uh McCarthy. The, the, the director of the depot has been meeting with all the tenants and. Uh, while it's not perfect, it is a good game plan and I think everybody um in the building is in support of the renovation.
My last question, Mayor Collins, uh through you is uh, once this, if this uh bid is um approved tonight. What will the remaining amount be in that twenty twenty-one specific purpose option tax fund that was designated? Um, that we've been taking all of these improvements downtown out of.
Do you have that number, Mr. Sanchez?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um I had, uh, I figured this question would come up, so I asked Robin uh for that number. And the balance would be approximately four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
End of the questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Maybe not a, I guess I could form it as a question. Through you, Mr. Moore, Director, uh there's been some discussion about the elevator in the building. Can you just tell us how that's going to be repaired and renovated?
Mr. Mayor, through you. Uh, so the elevator renovation is actually going to be a separate project tackled by the depots. The, by the depot themselves. Uh, they, what I understand is they would have that project. Uh, completed right about the time we complete this project, so spring of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the bid, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, this bid is approved.
Next item. Next item, number nineteen A, application filed with the city clerk's office for Apple Colorado LLC. Doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, one four zero one Del Range Boulevard, Cheyenne, Wyoming. License currently held by AB Cheyenne, Wyoming LLC, doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar.
All right, we have an application to uh, uh transfer a liquor license, and so is anybody in the audience would like to speak to that? Welcome back, gentlemen. It was a short meeting tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Brian Prophet, um on behalf of the applicant here, Apple, Colorado. I was online last time when we uh met on this matter a few weeks ago. With me also this evening, Mr. Brian Call, our area manager uh for this restaurant. And we understand that this did not pass finance, um it passed finance, I'm sorry, but it was not unanimous. And therefore, we were asked if we could have someone here this evening, if there were any additional questions uh council may have regarding this application.
Very good. Is there anybody, questions that they would like to ask of the applicant? Anybody?
Uh, Mayor Collins through you. Um, I had the opportunity this afternoon to visit with Peyton at your restaurant. Um, and um just want to say that um. I think the employees are very excited about this change and about um the plans that you have. So um I know they're looking forward to it and I believe our community will look forward to it as well. So thank you for being here.
Ms. Rascibull.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Yeah, I was a no vote on that uh finance. And it was just that I had a stronger feeling about franchises having full retail liquor licenses. And the community here is, doesn't have an abundance of those available to them right now, which it. Would give us more opportunity to broaden our tax base if we had more of them. So in cases where franchises have those types of licenses, it's my feeling that a bar and grill license would be more appropriate. Uh, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. I know we have a few more of those available. I know there's other requirements for them and it's just my hope that you and the. Uh, three or four other franchises at the current year holding them. Uh, would be willing to sit down with the city and, and make that. Change. I don't think it would change your overall bottom line or your operations in any way.
I, I appreciate that comment. Uh, it, it's a, it's a difficult situation for the city and I understand. You know, there are even a handful of those retail licenses currently parked, not being used at all. Of course, that's never been a situation with Applebee's. Applebee's for years, maybe even decades. I'm not sure how long this license has been held at this location, has utilized it. Virtually every day, um paying taxes to this city. One of the difficulties, of course, with a bar and grill license again, is that is not a license that can be transferred. And I think this city had a difficulty with that in a, a restaurant recently named Wasabi, which was. I, I understand that restaurant changed hands, was not allowed to serve alcohol for some extended period of time. Which obviously would be very difficult for a, a purchase and acquisition like this. Because obviously alcohol is an important aspect of this business. And during this transfer project. Um, Wyoming and Wyoming law allows us to continue to utilize that license during that period of time. Um, thus benefiting everyone uh in Cheyenne, both um as an opportunity, a place to go to enjoy food and drink. But also the city through its tax revenue. It, it didn't sit idle during that couple of months like. Uh, happened uh with a bar and grill uh situation. And so certainly we'd be interested in sitting down and talking to Cheyenne about those opportunities. It's a difficult situation, of course, because it is the liquor code, which is not something we can rewrite. Although I think there have been a lot of efforts to try to make more of these licenses available or um. Alternatively, to make bar and grill licenses transferable in such a way that if we were to acquire that license. And then in ten years, if a different opportunity arose and someone wanted to purchase that license from us, a bar and grill license, if that. Were to happen, uh that the restaurant wouldn't have to close, or at least be without alcohol during that period of time. So we'd certainly be happy to sit down, talk to the city about those options and opportunities available to us. Uh, but with the understanding that there are some roadblocks in the way if we were to make that change.
Thank you for that answer. Dr. Aldrich.
I had one more question that I just thought of, Mayor Collins. I'm just wondering with the new franchise holder, um or the new holding corporation that's going to be taking over this particular location. Um, are you utilizing um the opportunity for off-site catering with uh liquor? Um, at your other locations or it, it, does Applebee's have any type of a? Uh, maybe a national policy or something that um restricts you from being able to do off-site catering uh with alcohol?
It's an interesting question, Ms. Aldrich. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Aldrich, my apologies. Um, this is the first Applebee's franchise location for my client, Apple, Colorado, here in Wyoming. Um, they have, I don't know, is it hundreds of locations?
Yeah, currently we're over four hundred and fifty locations.
Across the country. I can't tell you how many of those states allow for off-site alcohol. Uh, catering as you're describing. I, I certainly think it's something that they would be open to, but I think it's something that's a bit new to them coming to. Um, Wyoming. That retail liquor license is kind of a Cadillac here in Wyoming and allows such opportunity. Then I think that's certainly something that they would be interested in, look into and consider, of course, if it made sense and we're safe uh to do so.
Mayor Collins through you, but it's not a restriction. Uh, you, you might be able to, in this case, actually fully utilize this retail liquor license. Um, where maybe the previous owner did not choose to do that, but if there's no restriction from Applebee's per se. That would re, keep you from being able to do that in our community.
Prefer to off-site alcohol.
Yeah, right. Right. Thank you.
Um, yeah, yeah, that is correct, from what I understand.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else on the uh transfer of liquor license? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, I haven't got a second. I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moody. All right. Last call for comments. Any? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the application for the liquor license is approved and good luck to you guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Twenty A, voucher report.
All right, is there anybody here in the audience around the governing body that'd like to discuss the vouchers? Next item, please.
Twenty B, announcement of a public hearing to be held October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five at six P M. At the Laramie County School District Number One Boardroom, two eight one zero House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting for a bar and grill liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office. For Red Bones LLC, doing business as Ham Bones Pizza, four one five West Seventeenth Street, Suite one seventy and one eighty. Twenty C, announcement that a Calcutta benefiting Make-A-Wish Wyoming will be held November seventh through November eighth, twenty twenty-five. At Red Lion Hotel and Conference Center, two zero four West Fox Farm Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Ten percent of all proceeds go to the charity, twenty-one other businesses.
All right, is there anybody here in the audience that came to speak to the governing body under other business? Hearing none, how about from the governing body?
Sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. Um, I have several comments here. First and foremost, I'd like to remind everyone that we will be holding the Ward Three Council and Copy. This Saturday at uh Dos Park from nine to eleven, so we would love to have people stop in and visit with us if they have any ideas or concerns for our community. I also wanted to just, um, I hope people on the, our council members in our community recognize. That we did have some awards that were given in our community this week. Um, the um. Dubois or Duvois, uh however you prefer to say it, uh Historic Preservation Award that went to Samuel and Josephine Carlson for the work on their house on East Nineteenth Street. Had the opportunity to drive by there and um they've done a really nice job and what a great award to be able to be presented by the Historic Preservation. Um, board. And then the Community Spirit Award that was uh recognized by the Tribune Eagle for Dr. Reverend Hilton McClendon. Uh, senior who's been a friend, I think, uh to Emily on this council and is doing great things in our community. And also works as our chap, one of our chaplains for the Cheyenne Police Department. Um, I think that speaks to the quality of the, his character. And his commitment and contribution to our community. Um, I have the opportunity to serve also as the late, the council's liaison to the Cheyenne Animal Shelter and. Uh, this last week, we've had, um, as many of you know, if you've been reading the um. Press releases and things that have gone out, that we um had a situation that was very taxing on, um, I think with the animal sh- shelter. Um, staff and also on our um employees. And so I know that this is not the type of work that most of us would enjoy doing. Um, it's. I think hard, I, I can't even imagine how hard and difficult and um frustrating it must be to watch. Um, a situation where animals are um put at risk and people are called in to uh rescue those animals and. Um, we had some employees that um Director Fountain uh brought to our attention. That I just think that um even though it's their regular job and, and they take on a job as a city employee, knowing that. These are situations that they might have to deal with. You always hope that you're not going to have to deal with them. Um, simply because you hope that you're going to have a, a pretty quiet day in animal control. Um, and I don't think that's what last week was at all for our animal control employees. So we had um Lizzie Wagner, who's our animal control supervisor, along with uh Johnny Kinsvatter, who's an animal control officer. And Peter Kissel, who's also an animal control officer that worked with Ezra Gillis, our risk and safety officer. And John Palmer, our code enforcement supervisor, and David Irwin, a code enforcement officer, and Anthony Bannon, a code enforcer, enforcement officer. That all worked um on this particular um situation. And um while, again, it's one of their regular, um in their job description, so to speak, it's one of those. Things that you hope you never have to actually do. And I think that um. It when our employees go above and beyond um the normal routine, expectation of their job, that. Uh, we need to make sure that we provide them with the support and the uh resources to do those jobs. So I just want to give a huge shout out to those folks that really worked closely with the Cheyenne Animal Shelter. Um, I think our relationship hasn't always been the best with the Cheyenne Animal Shelter. Um, but I think that um in this situation, our employees have worked really well and really closely. In order to make the best of a bad situation. So on behalf of uh Ward Three and the people that I serve. Like, we appreciate all the work that is done by the compliance office.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, welcome back Treasurer Lockman. It's great to have you with us. Um, second of all, Mayor, just uh to kind of. Comment on, on what Dr. Aldrich was saying, the numbers are staggering from this situation. Comment on on what Doctor Aldrich was saying, the numbers are staggering from this situation. Uh for those of you don't know, it was an animal hoarding situation at a at a home. A hundred and two animals living in deplorable conditions. And upon uh arrival of our animal control staff, many of those animals were deceased. So it's just a heartbreaking situation. Uh prayers to the staff. Of uh compliance and code enforcement and animal control. Um and then on a night when we paid tribute to our uh colleague, Mister Roybal. His family uh did mention in his obituary that in lieu of flowers, you could make a don- he would. Rather want you to make a donation to the animal shelter. And I think that's incredibly timely, because the cost estimate of this particular situation is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Excuse me, three hundred thousand dollars. So um. Yeah, Scott, uh Mister Roybal would would definitely want us to uh support the animal shelter now more than ever.
Mister Mayor.
Doctor Remins.
I also want to make sure that we're including Director Fountain in that list as well. Um I know he feels these things very deeply and works really hard to take care of his staff as well as the community. So I want to thank you for your leadership and taking care of our folks.
Anybody else? Mister Layborn.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Obviously, this is a unique situation in that it's repeated. This is not the first time that this individual has done something like this. And now we're faced with these costs and the issues that are related to it. So I would suggest that it's really time we took a look at lobbying the state of Wyoming. And the legislature, when they uh make these decisions, because the fact of the matter is, we need to have law. Regarding this matter, so that we take full advantage of this really um. Incredibly awful situation to call their attention to the fact. That there needs to be state law dealing with this issue. And it's really time that we started lobbying on behalf of that, because um it happened once. It's happened twice. Are we gonna just uh expect it to uh go away on its own? So I'm certainly interested in seeing what we can do in that regard. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Anybody else in the governing body? I just want to send my uh my thoughts out to our CRE team too uh this evening. Um today Scott Aker, who is the director of our Botanic Gardens, passed away. Another um shocking uh loss for our community and for our city. And Scott was a uh a real professional, came with a lot of knowledge and uh really made a difference. And uh he'd been suffering an illness and uh unfortunately, we lost him this morning. So our thoughts go out to the team at the Botanic Gardens and all the Cheyenne family as we uh mourn a second loss in just two weeks. And with that sad news, we are adjourned. Thank you.